Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Di Maria is absent with notice. Can I get a motion to appoint a trustee as mayor pro tem for tonight's meeting?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint trustee Whitco as mayor pro tem for this evening's meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we have roll call, please?
Trustee Khan?
Here.
Trustee Minks?
Here.
Trustee Sheba?
Here.
Trustee Phil?
Here.
Trustee Travis?
Here.
Trustee Whitco?
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you. Can I get an approval of the minutes of our regular meeting from January 14th, 2025?
I'll make the motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 14th, 2025.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by trustee Mink, seconded by trustee Sheba. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Special reports, Outstanding Neighbor Recognition. Okay. We're going to have Community Relations Commission Chairperson Teresa Poliak and trustee Connie Travis.
Lisa, do you want to come down too? As a commissioner, come down. Lisa, yeah. Good evening. I'm Teresa Poliak. I'm proud to serve the village as the Chair of the Community Relations Commission. We also have Commissioner Lisa Kabir. The purpose of the Community Relations Commission is to foster, encourage, and stimulate the improvement of relations among and between residents of all races, creeds, national origins, and economic and educational levels, and to provide all individuals with an equal opportunity to grow and participate to the best of their ability in the economic, educational, social, and cultural activities available in our community. The commission will also assist in the development of public information and related communication programs to enhance the quality of life for all village residents. It is my pleasure and privilege tonight to represent the Community Relations Commission in honoring another extraordinary individual through the Outstanding Neighbor Recognition Program. This program provides all Morton Grove residents the opportunity to recognize neighbors who go above and beyond to make their community a better place. Tonight, I am delighted to acknowledge a truly exceptional neighbor, Dave Ruber. His nomination submitted by Vivian Kabir highlights the many reasons why Dave is so deserving of this recognition. Dave and Vivian, would you like to please join me at the podium? I would like to share with our audience some of the heartfelt words that Vivian included in her nomination of Dave. Vivian wrote, "Dave is the most loyal, honest, and caring neighbor I have ever met. He takes care of almost all of his neighbors, whether it's blowing leaves, watering grass, snow plowing sidewalks, or even cleaning off the snow from nearly every car on the neighborhood. When COVID hit, Dave would go to the grocery store, stock up on all the grilling items, and come over saying, 'What are we grilling today?'" We would literally feed four houses with the food he brought. He is the most humble man I have ever met and truly grateful to call him my friend and neighbor. Any idea I come up with, he's all with his support. This year, we decided to host a Friendsgiving and invite neighbors and friends who don't have family nearby. Dave didn't hesitate to join in and made the best stuffing ever. Having known Dave almost 10 years, I could go on and on about the countless ways he's made a difference in our community.
So, it's an honor to be the trustee liaison to the Community Relations Commission, and I'd like to thank the commission for all they do in supporting this wonderful program. Vivian, thank you so much for your nomination of Dave. You truly exemplify the qualities that the CRC looks for when they are looking for an outstanding neighbor. So, Dave, if you want to come on over, I'd like to share some tokens of our appreciation with you.
I can sash.
I have no sash for you, but I can give you a nice pin, a village pin, and a pen.
Thank you.
I can give you a village mug.
Oh, I like that.
I can give you a certificate.
Oh, I can free me.
Making you outstanding neighbor.
Thank you.
And I can give you a gift certificate that can be used at a Morton Grove restaurant.
Oh, thank you very much.
So, please take that as our token of appreciation for being an outstanding neighbor. So, it's easy to see why your neighbors love and care for you so much. You've got such a kind and giving spirit. So, thank you very much.
These gray hairs didn't control easily, and I've lost all mine, so.
So, either of you want to say anything else?
Oh, no, I got a 30-minute speech. Hi, I'm Dave. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your service. Thank you very much. I've had the opportunity of using your services. You guys are wonderful, you're outstanding, and a real tribute to our community. So, thank you very much. Vivian is really the reason why I'm up here, and it's so nice to find someone who's on the same tenor that I am, because I've always been an outgoing type of individual who always does what he can to do things right. Even in my business and everything else, it was always about doing what's fair and what's right. I've always gone with the philosophy is, it's easy to be nice, it's easy to smile, it's hard to hate, but it's easy to smile. And I really appreciate everyone here, the board and everything else. It's a wonderful community, and thank you again for this award. I really do appreciate it. Thank you. It's nice being recognized. Oh, you already begun?
I think they got a meeting to get to.
They do?
Did you have anything you wanted to say? No, no, besides the gray hairs that he's caused in the past 10 years, I think I'm okay.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Ruber, and thanks for those inspirational words.
I would just like to invite anyone who is interested in serving our village to join the Community Relations Commission. We meet the third Tuesday of every other month. Our next meeting is March 17th, 2025, so this coming March, at 6:30 here at Village Hall, up on the second floor. Everyone's welcome. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask William O'Brien and Chief Kennedy to join me at the podium for some more special events. Trustee Minks, would you like to come down as liaison? Okay. All right. So, we're here for the promotion of Lieutenant William O'Brien to District Chief. William began his career in the fire service in 2002 as a firefighter with the Morton Grove Fire Department. In his 25 years in the fire service, William has obtained numerous certificates, including Fire Arson Investigator. Most recently, William completed the Chief Fire Officer Certification from the University of Illinois. William also works as an instructor, 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 excuse me, for NIPSTA and McHenry County College and the Fire Science Department. And William, with the support of his wife Amy and son Tommy, is honored and privileged to serve the village of Morton Grove residents and looks forward to his new responsibilities as District Chief. So, if you want to stand up here, and we will do the official oath if you raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, William T. O'Brien.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois, the rules, regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois, the rules, the regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of District Chief of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of District Chief of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability.
That's great. Congratulations.
First, I'd like to thank my family, Amy and Tommy, for putting up with me all these years. Second, I'd like to thank the board. I appreciate this opportunity. And then lastly, I'd like to thank the department, both current members and former members. It's been a privilege to work with you all. So, thank you.
Excellent. Congratulations. There's three copies?
Yeah, there's three copies.
Two more copies.
You have to sign two more copies.
We know where you work.
You're one of the good guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations. At this time, I'll ask for Eric Miller and Mike Simkins to join me at the podium.
Eric, do you have somebody you want to have join? Why don't you introduce who you have here, please?
This is my wife of 21 years.
Is that a question?
You better know it. All right. A little bit different here. So, it's my pleasure to introduce to you our newest lieutenant, Eric Miller. If you don't mind, I'd like to share a little bit about him with you. Eric graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Oklahoma with a bachelor's degree in business administration in 2001. He began his career with the Morton Grove Fire Department in 2003. In 21 years of service to the village of Morton Grove, Eric has obtained numerous State of Illinois certifications, including Company Fire Officer, Advanced Technician Firefighter, Fire Apparatus Engineer, and Hazardous Materials Technician. Eric is also certified in confined space, trench, rope, and vehicle machinery rescue. Eric is the medical officer of the Morton Grove Fire Department and serves on several advocate Lutheran General Hospital committees. Eric is vice president of Morton Grove Firefighters Association and is a certified peer fitness trainer. Eric is grateful for the unwavering support of from his wife Erin, their two children, Caleb and Jocelyn, and his parents Scott and Julie. He's honored and privileged to serve the residents of the village of Morton Grove and looks forward to his new responsibilities and challenges as lieutenant. If you wouldn't mind stepping up, I'll ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Eric P. Miller.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The rules, regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
The rules, regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Lieutenant of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability.
Of the office of Lieutenant of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability.
I'm sure you will. Congratulations. And you have somebody to pin the badge on you?
Sure. All right.
I'd just like to thank my wife Erin of 21 years. She, got it. So, we got married two weeks before I got hired, so she didn't know at the time she was going to share me for all these years of marriage with the Fire Department. I'd like to thank Jocelyn for all the support that you've given me. You always keep me humble, and I appreciate that. My son Caleb could not join us tonight. He's at Western Illinois. He's working on a bachelor's degree for fire medic. I couldn't be more proud of him as a dad. I'd like to thank my parents Scott and Julie for all the support you've given me from birth. You've raised me, and I just appreciate all the support and love that you've given me. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity, and I'd like to thank all the guys in the back of the room. I couldn't have done this without you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And may I have Tom Goodwin step up? And Tom, if you'd please bring whatever family you'd like to.
After crowded.
Clear out the second row. You got a family that good-looking, you got to show them off, right? Tom, why don't you introduce who you have here with you today, please?
I've got my wife Emily, my daughter Scout, Bernie, Kate, my son Willis, and his daughter, Gigi.
Welcome. Thanks. It's kind of gratifying seeing guys like this who I hired how many years ago?
19 years ago.
Yeah. Kind of stepping into something I saw in you 19 years ago, so no surprise here. Tom graduated from Loyola University, Maryland with a Bachelor of Arts in Sociology. He began his career in the fire service in 2006 as a firefighter in Morton Grove. In his 19 years of service to Morton Grove, Tom has obtained many certifications, including Company Fire Officer, Advanced Technician Firefighter, Health and Safety Officer, Fire Apparatus Engineer, and Fire Investigator. Tom is also certified in confined space, trench, rope, and vehicle machinery rescue. Tom serves many functions at the Morton Grove Fire Department. He is the chairman of the Fire Investigator Team, chairman of the New Hire Committee, and the chairman of the Labor Management Committee. Tom has served on local 2178 union boards since 2016 and currently serves as the president of the Morton Grove Firefighters Association. Tom is grateful for the support from his six children, Willis, Maggie, Scout, Bernie, Harvey, and Kate, and especially thankful for his wife Emily, who you just met, whom has made his dreams possible through her love and encouragement. Tom considers it a privilege to serve the residents of Morton Grove and looks forward to the honor of continuing the invaluable traditions of the Morton Grove Fire Department for years to come. Tom, I'll ask you to step up, please.
All right. Unfortunately, I get the readers.
Got to get your glasses, too. Yeah, just wait. If you would raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Thomas W. Goodwin.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The rules, regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
The rules, regulations, and ordinances of the village of Morton Grove.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Lieutenant of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability.
Of the office of Lieutenant of the village of Morton Grove according to the best of my ability.
I'm sure you will. If you wouldn't mind signing here, please. And you got somebody to pin your badge on you?
There you go. We're all counting on you.
Absolutely. Oh, do you want to say something? Yeah.
I think the guy stole my thunder earlier. I'm going to reiterate a lot of the same things. First, my wife Emily and my children for the support. Oftentimes, they didn't deserve it. My wife Emily was really the driving force for me to get into the fire service, and it was the best thing that ever happened to me. So, I wouldn't be here without them. My second family out here, all my brothers, there's not enough I can say about them, and it's an honor and privilege, and I'd like to finally thank the board for this privilege. Thank you.
And that would conclude my report, Mr. Mayor.
I wouldn't say it that way, but this does conclude the celebratory part of this meeting, so if you're here for that, now's a good time for you to exit before the business part starts. But you're welcome to stay, of course.
I'd like to have that fellow you honored tonight on my neighborhood for what she said.
John, did you get this to read about your?
I did, but you're welcome to do it.
No, no, you got it.
You son of a...
I'm an equal opportunity, Mike, giver.
They took that one fellow on.
All right. Just a few announcements here. The next Neighborhood Outreach Meeting will be held on Thursday, February 27th, at Melzer School at 6 o'clock PM. Am I in the right spot now? Oh, no. Actually, I moved on to the president's reports. We're going to backtrack. Public hearings, there are none. Plan Commission reports, there are none being reported on tonight. Residents' comments on agenda items only. If you have any comments on what's on our agenda, you can come up and talk about them. Okay. Seeing none. Now, I can move on to the Neighborhood Outreach Meeting that will be at Melzer School on Thursday, February 27th, at 6 o'clock PM. An update on Oakton Street roadwork. Starting today, the traffic pattern changed for roadwork on Oakton from Marmora Avenue to the railroad tracks, with vehicular travel move toward the inside lanes adjacent to the concrete barrier. Driveway entrances will remain accessible on Oakton Street westbound between Austin and Lehigh avenues. And finally, we always want you to stay up to date with village events, so please sign up for the e-news and follow us on Facebook and Instagram. Okay. Clerk's report?
No report, your honor.
Okay. Staff report? Chuck, anything?
Yes, I have two items to present tonight. The first would be Ordnance 2504. It'd be the first reading, and I would actually request that we do a waiver of the second reading to have it be considered tonight. And then, as part of that, I just will provide a brief summary on that discussion. So, this would be an ordinance authorizing the village to terminate the Economic Incentive and Tax Incluent Act late allocation financing development agreement by and between the village of Morton Grove, Illinois, and MHDC SLFF LLC and the Metropolitan Housing Development Corporation, which was previously approved pursuant to Ordnance 2331. And just by a little way of background for the benefit of the audience watching at home, this is in relation to a property located at 8500-8550 Lehigh, related to a RFP we issued in early 2020 for a development agreement for that property. In looking through the process, the developer did not close on the property by September 1st, 2024, and as such, and in line with the agreement guidelines, we are seeking approval to terminate the agreement and put the item back out for RFP to see what the market shows for a potential developer. But I will also add, the current developer who this agreement is with has every right and ability to propose future use of the property. So, this is, you know, terminating this agreement, but that developer and other developers will have the opportunity to propose on this site. So, with that, I'm available for any questions for the board's consideration.
Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Chuck, so the former developer that did not meet all the criterias to get to where we're at today, they're allowed to come back and try again?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve Ordnance 25-04?
Don't we have to, we have to put it on the table? Okay. I'll make the motion to approve Ordnance 2504.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made by trustee Minks, seconded by trustee Sheba. Now...
Now...
Sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. I was going to make the motion that we waive the second reading on Ordnance 2504 so we can vote this evening.
Second that.
Okay. Motion made by trustee Minks, seconded by trustee Khan. Roll call, please.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Sheba?
Aye.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Any discussion on...
Trustee Whitco.
Oh, aye.
So, the request to waive the second reading on Ordnance 2504 passes 6 to 0, your honor.
Great. Any questions or comments on the ordinance itself?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
Just so the public knows, what we're talking about is a property around the moose. We had a developer that had this grandiose plan about three or four or five years ago, and they've dragged their feet along, and it comes to a point where we have to cut the tie. That's what we're doing tonight, but as we were told, that they have a right to come back and resubmit. They'd certainly want to change the, they wanted to do so many changes that it backed us up against the wall. So, we're walking away from it, and this is what we're doing tonight. End of my report.
All right. And the motion's already been made, so please call for the vote.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Sheba?
Aye.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Ordnance 2504 passes 6 to 0, your honor.
One more item for the board's consideration tonight. This is Resolution 2503, which is approving or authorizing participation in the Northern Illinois Municipal Electric Collaboration, NYMAC, and authorizing the village administrator to approve contracts for electricity for village-owned buildings, facilities, and infrastructure. This is a routine agreement the village board considers around this time every year. This really just gives us the flexibility to utilize NYMAC to help us facilitate lower costs for our residents when it comes to electric service. So, this is just really reinitializing that so that way in 2025, if something comes up, we have the ability to be flexible and help our residents if a better opportunity comes for electricity. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions on Resolution 25?
Yes, I have a question. You mentioned about the residents, but in the resolution, it doesn't say anything about the residents. It's all about public works and municipal buildings.
So, they cover us, and they're arbitrary for, but it was, this is, I should say, came out of the aggregation that happened maybe about 15 years ago and public sector. So, admittedly, after communities started going this route, ComEd made their rates more competitive. So, this allows us, it's built out of that existing kind of structure that allows for it. So, you are right, it's for municipal buildings, but it is...
So, it will cover the residents, other than if the residents choose opt out of it?
Opt out of it, or if we find a deal that will help the residents with that, which ComEd has been very competitive to not need there to be a deal for residents right now because of how they're supplying...
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 25-03?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by trustee Phil, seconded by trustee Travis. Please call for the vote.
Trustee Sheba? Aye.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Resolution 25-03 passes 6 to 0, your honor.
Thank you. Corporation Council?
No report.
All right. Reports by trustees. Trustee Khan?
Thank you, pro tem, Mayor. I do have a few things to read. My first is Ordnance 25-01, which was introduced on January 14th, 2025, and tonight, we will be doing the second reading of this ordinance. This ordinance will be amending Title I, Chapter 11, Section 4, entitled Fees for Specific Permits, Licenses, Certificates, and... entitled Fees for Specific Permits, Licenses, Certificates, and Services of the Municipal Code of the Village of Morton Grove to update the fees for water rates and removal of yard waste stickers. And I'd like to make a motion to approve this ordinance 25-01 as presented tonight.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Khan, seconded by Trustee Travis. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Sheba?
Aye.
Ordnance 2501 passes 6 to 0, Your Honor.
The second reading that I have is for Resolution 25-04, which will be authorizing the execution of the contract with Lauterback and Aiman LLP to perform auditing services. The village initiated a qualifications-based selection process for auditing services and received three proposals. The proposals were reviewed and evaluated by village staff. Lauterback and Aiman LLP was found to be the preferred auditing firm to validate the integrity of the village's financial statements. Lauterback and Aiman's proposal is for auditing services for a five-year period beginning December 31, 2024 through December 31, 2028. And I make a motion to approve the Resolution 25-04 as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Khan, seconded by Trustee Phil. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Sheba?
Aye.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Resolution 25-04 passes 6 to 0, Your Honor.
That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Minks?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have any formal report, but I have two comments. The first comment is for the Citizens Police and Fire Academy. The village will be hosting its first Citizens Police and Fire Academy starting in March of this year. The 10-week program starts March 19th and will be on Wednesday night from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM. The program will give participants an understanding of our departments along with a working knowledge of law enforcement and firefighting. To learn more, please visit the village's website. And the other comment I have, this is the beginning of the year and we're still in the heating season and it doesn't hurt any of us to make sure we check the batteries in our smoke detectors and our CO detectors. So it's just a word of advice. That's the end of my report, Your Honor. Thank you.
Good reminder. Thank you. Trustee Sheba?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Trustee Phil?
Yes, Your Honor, I had a couple of things here. I have Resolution 2505. It's authorizing a contract with Core and Main LP of Lake Bluff, Illinois for the 2025 Fire Hydrate Purchasing Program. This is one of those things that the average person doesn't realize what we spend. People always wonder, what are we spending our money on? Well, you've got fire hybrids out there. You see those fire hybrids and then you don't see them. But these are very expensive. They're almost $9,000 apiece. And we have it cordoned off where I believe we're buying 10 a year. So we're replacing 10 a year. I just wanted to throw that comment out there. I'm asking for Resolution 2505 to be approved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Trustee Phil, seconded by Trustee Minks. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Sheba? Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Resolution 25-5 passes 6 to 0, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments. The Hollywood Light Recycling, I just did it tonight. From now until February 1st, which is Saturday, the village will be collecting holiday lights for recycling. The lights must be disconnected from any decorative items and the lights can be deposited in a recycling bin located next to the finance counter. That bin is loaded. I'm glad to see that. My second comment is the 50/50 Tree Planting Program. From now until October, I'm sorry, from now until April 1st, 2025, the village will be accepting applications for a 50/50 Tree Planting Program where interested residents can request a tree in the parkway near their home with the resident paying $60 for the tree and the village paying the other $60. There are a variety of species available. And to participate, please visit the village hall to submit an application. They only have a certain amount of species, so naturally, the first one in gets their choice. I have one other comment, and this is about the leaf collection that took place this year. We spent $81,000 on leaf collection. And we received between 80 and 90 people calling and complaining that their leaf pickup wasn't taken care of. And in those cases, it's because people have been putting things in the leaf collection that didn't belong there. And we will continue the program next year. And I've got a couple of people to me personally asking, what's wrong with the leaf collection? Well, if you read your newsletter that you get, it's always advertised what's going on in the village. So I can't encourage you enough, not just take it out of the mailbox and throw it in the garbage. Read it and don't throw it in the garbage. Keep it, maintain it, so that you can consult back to it. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Travis?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Just some winter adoptive planter updates. Starting February 3rd, 2025, Public Works will be removing decorations from planters. So if you have any personal decorations that you'd like to keep, please collect them from your planter before Monday, but do not take the plant. That is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have two ordinances that have already been presented. These are the second reads. Ordnance 25-02, approving a special use permit for an indoor recreational facility at 6451 Main Street in Morton Grove. And this is to approve a special use permit authorizing the construction of a pickleball facility. I move that we approve Ordnance 25-02.
Second.
Okay, this time I'm giving it to Trustee Travis. So I made the motion and Trustee Travis seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Sheba?
Aye.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Ordnance 25-02 passes 6 to 0, Your Honor.
Okay, and then I have Ordnance 25-03, approving an amendment to a special use permit granting the expansion of an existing daycare facility at the property commonly known as 5633 through 49 Dempster Street in Morton Grove. And this is expanding on Poco Loco. So I move that we approve Ordnance 25-03.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Whitco, seconded by Trustee Travis. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a comment.
Yes.
Anybody that was watching the last meeting knows that I brought a subject on bollards. Bollards are protective posts that they put up to protect from cars. And my comment was, I felt the bollards should have been in the inside of the fence. Rather protect the children than the fence. But Chief Whitzel, and now I know why you're the chief, came up with the idea of stepping the bollards back a couple of feet from the fence, which at that point protects the children more so because some person who has a sick mind might want to step on those bollards to do something ridiculous. And Chief came up with the idea of stepping them back a couple of feet, which I'm in favor of. Each side has their opinion and it worked out fine. Chief, I want to thank you for that comment.
Okay, please call for the vote.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Sheba?
Aye.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Ordnance 25-03 passes 6 to 0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there any other business? Okay, hearing none, presentation of the warrants. Trustee Khan?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to present a warrant register for January 28, 2025 in the amount of $1,947,616.57. And I also like to make a motion to approve this warrant register as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Khan, seconded by Trustee Minks. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please take the vote.
Trustee Sheba? Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
January 28th, warrants, pass 6 to 0 as presented.
Thank you. Residents' comments? Any residents' comments? Please state your name and address.
Sure. My name is Roy F. Campbell. The address is 5506 on Lincoln, Unit 521. The reason why I just thought I'd step up was to introduce something a little bit. This is actually good news, not bad. The reason why I'm talking is that, one, I want to compliment Morton Grove. We, all of us have kids and when they grow up, we start looking for somewhere to get them to move on, to move into your house. We have a son who's 21. He's on the autism spectrum. And probably about three years ago, my wife and I started analyzing what would be a good community for him to integrate into. There's such a thing and a term called ACIL, Community Integrating Living Arrangement. And you don't want to have, especially when you have a disabled adult, staying at home. He doesn't have a guardianship from us. He can live independently, but it's getting those wings on. And I just want you to know, over a long period of time, my wife and I look, my wife more so, and this area, Morton Grove and Niles, became the ideal area. It's got a tremendous number of not-for-profits. It's got a tremendous number of interesting opportunities for volunteering. I happen to be an attorney. I work with White Shirt Realty over on Milwaukee Avenue. And Steve Costo, I think some of you may know, is a broker there, the managing broker. So I'm close, so I can stop by every once in a while and see him. I've already had conversations. My son moved in in October of 2023, so now we're actually going into all of his second year. Your fire department's been great because we just wanted to make sure that with some knowing that he might have some problems. Your police department's been great. I've had conversations with your social worker. So the opportunities are absolutely phenomenal in what's going on. And I think more and more, we're seeing more and more people with disabilities and especially on the autism spectrum. And so being able to integrate into the community and just be part of it. He's got a not-for-profit that he works with that he actually goes out and goes to birthday parties and different parties for kids and they make a donation to his not-for-profit and he plays Sesame Street characters. And so he's, and he's been volunteering in a number of organizations here in the community. So I just wanted to thank you. He couldn't be here this evening. He will probably stop by. We've had a few hiccups as he gets involved. But he is getting involved now. This is Eden's Point where it's at. And he's actually involved with the condo board this evening for a meeting, so I thought I might step up. But the next meeting, I'm at least going to have him come in and introduce himself to you. So I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. So have a good evening. Thank you.
We look forward to meeting him. Thank you so much, Mr. Campbell. Yes.
Can you do me a favor? Can you stay after? I'd like to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other residents' comments? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion made by Trustee Minks, seconded by Trustee Phil. Meeting ends at 7:42. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting ends at 7:42.